I'd like to first take a minute and have a moment of silence. If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, a couple of comments. Got three things I want to mention tonight briefly. One, I think it's been questioned what the city of Bristol, Virginia's position is on the BBU OptiNet sale, and I want to make sure everybody understands that we tabled that decision back in June. And the city's position is we 100% support the sale of the OptiNet division to Sunset Digital. We endorse that sale, and so we will take no further action other than to say the city supports the sale of OptiNet to Sunset Digital. Next item, I'd like to thank Jeff Miller and Chelsea Leonard. They're the landfill operators that we had the pleasure of visiting. They're probably not here today, but me and Randall and Kevin went up to the landfill, toured the facility. Hard workers, learned a lot. Learned things I wasn't expecting to learn when we walked through. First time I'd ever been down in a landfill pit, I'll tell you. But it's quite an operation. I think there's a few ideas we talked about that we can do to help smooth that operations, try to make the place more efficient, so we want to work on those things. So I want to thank the employees because they're doing a good job of their keeping a landfill operating that wasn't necessarily set up probably for maximum execution to begin with, but they're doing a good job. Next thing is to let everybody know that Bristol, Virginia, and Washington County have met, and we're going to meet again. We're going to meet in joint session coming up, and we're going to talk about how to do an economic development partnership. So we've all thought through this and talked about how the city of Bristol alone is too small really to leverage economic development. We don't have the land, but Washington County is large and has land, but they don't have the municipal infrastructure that we have. So if we partner together and do this properly, then we can get some economic development leverage. So we're going to meet with them, we're going to sign some agreements, and we're going to do joint economic development. So we're going to hopefully show the state what it means to do regional economic development and do it with a focus and do it professionally. And we're going to move at a speed hopefully that people haven't seen before because we're really having a lot of discussions every week about this because this is very important to us. So I just wanted to say that. Anything else? City manager want to add to?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Any other council comments? All right, next item, recognition for service on the planning commission. Mark Esposito gave up, I think somewhere like six years of his life to do two terms on the planning commission. Takes a lot to volunteer in this city. I'll personally tell you, it's a lot more than I thought getting into these roles, so it takes a lot of work. It's not easy. So we'd like to recognize Mark. Got a plaque, like to give to him.
So the plaque says, President Marcus Esposito, appreciation of six years of service and dedication to the planning commission, July 12, 2011 to June 30, 2007.
No speeches. All right. Next item, regular agenda. Consider a budget policy for the city of Bristol, Virginia. So staff report.
Mayor and council, myself and Ms. Radlin will discuss this budget policy issue that has been brought to my attention by the CFO. Previously, the city has, well, first, the city has always want to abide by state code in regards to adopting budgets and when those need to be done and how they should be done. Secondly, we have to have a balanced budget, so we have to anticipate our payment for operations, debt service, and annual capital plan so that we do not exceed our budget revenues. Next, our current revenues need to support our current expenditures. So our ongoing and stable revenues will be used to support our ongoing operating costs. Fourth, one-time revenues or should be used for one-time expenditures. The use of a one-time revenue and one-time expenditure savings will be used for non-reoccurring expenditures. And what we mean by this is, is that if the city sells an asset and we obtain half a million dollars for the sale of that asset, that half a million would then be used for non-normal operating items, which might mean a capital expenditure of another piece of equipment that we may or may not need. It could be money that could be put into the reserve. But our goal is not to use those funds for normal operating expenses. Not saying that that won't happen, but that's our goal. Next, revenue and expenditure projections. As has been done in the past, maybe not as necessarily as recently as council would like to see, we will be updating council at least on a quarterly basis in regards to revenue and expenditure so you all know where the city is going over the short term and potentially given long-term forecasts so that we can better project what will be by the next budget cycle. Once again, that falls into our budget performance monitoring. The city departments will start monitoring their budget a little bit differently based upon what's coming. That way, we can work to increase productivity, lower costs, enhance service, and further communicate with the public the budget issues that the city of Bristol faces. We will maintain a budgetary control system to adhere to the budget and prepare monthly reports comparing actual revenues and expenditures to budgeted amounts. Finally, if there's a budget adjustment that is needed, we would still have to come to council as we have always done in the past in order to adjust any budget that was maybe not properly adjusted for in the budget cycle. Finally, and this is the big change for the city, currently the city operates on accrual basis accounting method. We are asking council to allow us to go to a cash basis method. This is in accordance with the governmental accounting standards, and it's also what has been adopted by the Uniform Financial Reporting Manual that is issued by the Virginia Auditor of Public Accounts and is consistent with the city charter. So in the past, we have not operated on a cash basis, and we are requesting that we be allowed to begin operations on a cash basis at this point.
Okay, a couple of comments, and then I'll let council comment. Key things in this budget policy that are important. We want to hear from the public. We put together financial standards that we want to put out this year, so this is one of those policies that is going to be important to the city going forward, so we'd like to hear if anybody from the public has any comment. I don't know if anyone signed up for this since it was a late entry. Okay. Well, the things on this policy are serious, so let's take this seriously and move forward. So council looking for a motion to adopt the policy.
My position is it was way too late to even consider. Way too late, you know, this, the agenda came out last week. This got put in today, this morning, yesterday morning?
It was put in yesterday.
Okay. Well, that's, I want to table this. Yeah, this is too important to consider, and if we're going to do stuff like this, Mr. City Manager, Ms. CFO, we need to do it in a timely manner.
And well-
So we can have an opportunity, just, no need, no need to comment, just the bottom line is, we need opportunities to study it and review it. In 24 hours, 36 hours isn't enough time, Mr. City Manager.
Well, let me put it, let me give you the timeline of how this occurred. On Friday afternoon, if you're going to make a comment like that, Mr. Flainer, I'm going to explain the situation so that-
We have a motion on the table.
Well, that's fine, and I'm going to explain the situation, and I've got a right under the charter to explain the situation. And if, on Friday afternoon, we went over this with the mayor and the vice mayor, and they suggested it be put on the agenda as quickly as possible, and that's what we did.
Well, as quick as it was possible, I would assume would have been Friday afternoon, which would give us an opportunity.
Well, when we finished the meeting, it was roughly 5:30 or 6 o'clock, and I could not get the agenda out at that time.
Okay. But, so you understand realistically-
Oh, I understand, and I'm doing everything I can.
You want an important, an important subject, and the bottom line is, for us to vote tonight would be actually negligent on the path of this council, in my opinion. Mayor and the vice mayor may know about it, and you may know about it, and had an opportunity to review it, as you did Friday afternoon, but that doesn't mean that the other members of council, maybe they did, I didn't, okay? Mr. Hartley says he didn't, okay? So bottom line is, we don't put something here before us and expect a vote. So the motion is, I have a motion to table.
I'll second that. I mean, I don't necessarily have any issue with this-
I don't either.
But I understand your point, considering that we got a revised agenda, but this wasn't attached to it until this afternoon. So, I mean-
It was, I was in meetings all afternoon, I don't know when that attachment went out, but it should have been attached yesterday when the revised agenda went out.
I saw it this afternoon. I agree with you, Mr. Hartley, that's what I saw.
And I had to ask.
I'll just double check and see when that went out and how it went out. I don't know how it went out, but-
Most of these are already in the charter, it's just spelling it out.
It's just spelling it out. It's already in the charter.
But we still need to have it for time.
I mean, I'd like to say, I don't necessarily have an issue with doing it, but if you want to, if you want to table it, I understand your point.
We have a second, Mr. Hartley seconded.
I understand y'all's reservations and concerns. It was not adequate timeline, but we had already been briefed on it, and we was not aware that everybody wasn't. But anyway, it is what it is.
Well, and that's going to go back to the rescheduling our meetings on Friday to a different day. That way, I have time to brief all council members on things coming up because if we're discussing something on a Friday afternoon, and that also goes in the fact we've implemented a new policy where things are supposed to be presented to me well in advance of the next meeting. That way, I can get the agenda out to you all hopefully on Wednesdays from this point forward, prior to the meeting on the following Tuesday. That's a goal I want to work towards. Department heads know that, and that policy was implemented on July 10 by letter to the department heads. So we're doing everything we can to get things out in an orderly fashion to you all so that we don't have these issues coming up. If you have questions between Wednesday and Tuesday, you have an opportunity to talk to me or whoever's, whoever's responsible for that agenda.
And I understand too, with all deference to the city manager and the circumstances that you have an issue right now with the clerk and secretary, your secretary has some health issues in her family, and I understand that. And you can't, no one, and you and the CFO can't handle the whole freight sometimes by yourself, so I don't want to sound trite and so forth, just that something like this realistically can ask us to vote and so forth, to me, would be irresponsible on the part of council.
And I understand that.
Do they call a roll?
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda, 2.1, consider street closure. Do we want to consider the consent agenda all as a package? So need a motion to consent?
Hold on, I do have one correction to the minutes. I noticed on the minutes for June 27, seems like they left a sentence in after there be four matters to be presented by members of the public. I think that sentence was from the previous minutes. If we could have that deleted.
Would you mind to repeat that, please?
The sentence, it's on page 146 of the minutes, the minutes from June 27. If you look right above item number E, matters to be presented, it mentions a call meeting that, I called a meeting on June 20 to discuss issues, so that would, I think that was from a previous set of minutes. They just left it in.
I think so.
Well, no, well, this is June 27, so, yeah.
Okay, so the motion would need to stay-
Yeah, adjust my motion to scratch out that particular section.
So to approve the agenda, consent agenda with the change to the minutes.
Can I ask a question? Was I there? And I mean, realistically, I mean, I know Mr. Wingard called a meeting and I wasn't there.
No, you were there.
Okay. I think everybody was there.
Okay. Good. I just want to make sure. Because I wasn't there for your meeting you wanted.
Okay, so get the motion adjusted.
Okay, so you made, I'll second the motion.
How was that motion?
The motion, we're going to consider the entire consent agenda as printed with the correction of on page 146 to remove that sentence. Mayor Hartley called a meeting to be held on June 20, 2017 at 6:00 PM to discuss BBU Got it?
And we're leaving items E and F as best written, like everything.
Yeah, it's just, just that one sentence, I think, was a holdover.
Right, that's right. Ms. Craig.
It made no sense. I mean, I was reading it, and it made no sense.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mr. Hartley and a second by, or motion by Mr. Hubbard and a second by Mr. Hartley, so clerk call a roll.
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, since this has passed and we have, and the regular agenda, we have council discussion, we have C, the animal shelter, we have a person that's employee of the city of Bristol that's present. I would respectfully ask that we move the C, item C, the animal shelter up in front of the executive session to allow a city employee who is here obviously to address the, that matter's probably worked all day and so forth and so on, and I think it would be unreasonable to-
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Okay, so we got a motion to move the animal shelter above executive session, a second by Mr. Hubbard. Clerk call a roll.
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, so we'll move down to council discussion, item C, animal shelter.
Counsel, it has been brought to my attention that, and we do have the animal control officer here to answer any questions, but I think I can potentially answer most of the questions that council may have in regards to this issue. We do have an animal shelter now that's being provided by the Jones Animal Clinic. They are in a position where they want to move away from an animal shelter, and they have given notice in the past that they want to do this, and there, that was roughly nine to 12 months ago, I believe, that when notice was given to council and to the city that they want to move away from the animal shelter business. The doctor there is of an opinion, he doesn't like to euthanize healthy animals, and he wants to make sure that he feels comfortable in his business. So with that, I've spoke with him, I've spoke with Chief Austin, I've spoke with our animal control officer in regards to this matter and how we will move forward. The veterinary hospital would like for us to have something in place by November 1 in regards to an animal shelter. Now, that puts us on a tight deadline. I know there have been discussions in the past with Washington County in going into a joint animal shelter venture with Washington County. Yesterday, I met with Mr. Berry, the county administrator in Washington County. Their timeline is a little bit different than our timeline, plus their needs are a little bit different than our needs. They would need an animal shelter that would hold roughly 40 to 50 dogs, probably 60 cats. Where our needs are, we need an animal shelter that would hold roughly 10 cat, or 10, 10 dogs up to 15 cats, if we just did it solely as a city. Ms., I can't pronounce her name, last name, Ms. Bouton, she has produced some spreadsheets that I gave to each of you all previously in regards to the average number of animals that we have in the animal shelter at any given time, and based on the conversation I've had with Dr. Allen, I think the size would be appropriate for 10 dogs and 15 cats. And there are some other requirements that we have to have. We have to have a separate room to isolate certain types of animals. We have to have a conference room, a food prep room. Nothing too extravagant, but there are certain requirements that we do need to abide by when we build an animal shelter.
Have to have a gym and a workout.
Got to have the gym, workout facility, shower, all that good stuff. They want their organic food too, so we have to do everything organic from this point forward. But in all seriousness, we need to start discussing how do we want to go about this project? What do we want to spend? And how quickly can we get it done? I feel like if we have some plan in place, even if the project cannot be completed by November 1, I feel like Dr. Allen will continue to work with us as long as he sees some progress being made. He just feels like at the moment there hasn't been any progress made, so he wanted to give us a hard and fast deadline so that we could start working on this and taking it serious like we should. There were some cost estimates that I had provided to you that were based upon information that was given to Ms., I cannot ever say your last name.
Bouton.
Bouton, I want to say-
It might be appropriate for her to step up to the mic and so forth and so on, so if we have any questions, if we have any questions, we can maybe address them to her if it's not too much inconvenient for you to do that, ma'am.
But we, there's cost estimates, depending on the size of the shelter, you know, varies anywhere from $120,000, I think, all the way up to $448,000 for a shelter for us, depending on the size. We need to start evaluating that cost and whether or not the type of shelter we want to build, how quickly we want it built, so that we can comply with all the regulations that are required of us, and get a cost estimate so we know how to go. Now, I'm going to go ahead and caution council, an animal shelter is not a revenue-producing business. It's going to be an expense for the city, and it's an expense that we haven't had in the past. So we need to be prepared to hire a couple of, three extra staff members in order to take care of the animals appropriately, and we'll have to pay for food and vet bills and things of that nature as well that we haven't had to deal with in the past. Scott County had just, they just built an animal shelter. I've put a list of their expenses in there, and I think it runs close to $82,600 and some dollars a year for the expenses for them to have their animal shelter. I would think that based on the size of their animal shelter and the size that we would need, our expenses would probably be somewhere in that range as well. Now, I know there have been some ideas passed around, that maybe we consider having a separate portion to the animal shelter that would be like a doggy daycare or a doggy hotel that could potentially bring in some revenue for our local citizens in order to help offset some of those costs. But at the end of the day, this is going to be a venture that runs in the red. It's not going to be, it's not going to put us in the black. So I'll leave that open for discussion for you all, and if I can answer any questions, please let me know.
I'd rather address a question to somebody that really does the work day to day, okay? And I told my counsel, fellow councilman, that I had expected CB Flainer to be here to not to speak on this issue, but she took ill, and that's my four-and-a-half-year-old puppy. And we got her at a animal shelter, okay? I'll just tell you. My question is to you, first of all, when you find dogs particularly, I know cats, they run, it's more of a rampant issue than dogs. Typically, what's the condition of the animals, the dogs that you find?
They're relatively good health. I mean, a lot of the animals that I pick up are going to have their flea problems, skin problems. I don't bring in, you know, a lot of animals that are, that need that necessary emergency medical care at that moment. You know, it is something that when I get an animal into custody, I need to do 15, 20 seconds of looking at the animal and see if there's anything that needs to be addressed. The state has mandated that we have a protocol for veterinary treatment, and we did come up with that with Dr. Allen, and so, you know, we look at the skin and the eyes and the nose, and if there's anything that needs to be addressed, he addresses it right then. If we have our own shelter, you know, I'm going to have to address myself with what's going into the shelter and then make that calls whether or not I'm going to my shelter or to him to address a health concern before I put into the general population with the other animals already housed.
So usually, they're not, they've not been mistreated, it's not that kind of an issue typically?
Not my running at large dogs, not necessarily. No, my mistreated dogs are check welfare when it's an animal that residents.
As an animal control officer in the city of Bristol, Virginia, how much have you dealt with or been able to deal with or interact with the different agencies around that are involved, like HollyHelp, et cetera, et cetera, as far as neutering and spaying animals? And do you have any idea if, for instance, Dr. Allen has been taking care of the city's issues at Dr. Jones, and if an animal is adopted, there's typically some sort of reimbursement, i.e. for the dog to adopt, at least that's how it is in Sullivan County? Do you know if the city of Bristol is recouping that, or is that just go directly to Dr. Allen at this point in time, or do you have any idea about the numbers and so forth?
Right. The adoption fee is going straight to Dr. Allen, because once the hold period has been met for the state, five days, not including day of pickup, then it becomes the property of him. The city has got no more ownership or responsibility with that animal. My billing stops on day six. My billing stops on day 11, when the animal has some kind of man-made item on it. The hold time for a dog that has a collar, or neutered, or ear tip, something that he wasn't born with, increases to 10 days, not including day of pickup. Okay, so day 11, my billing stops, and he becomes the custodian on it. So with that being said, he gets the adoption fees, because he's doing the vaccination, he's doing the deworming, he's doing a lot of the extra care to continue to house that animal, and he continues to house that animal for weeks beyond the time period that we are legally able to euthanize. So he's, he's taking that cost just to do right by the animals. We do reclaim, or we do regenerate the reclaim fee. That is coming back to the city. So if I pick up Fluffy on Monday and you don't pick up till Wednesday, there's a reclaim fee that is revnated. We don't actually see the money, it comes off of our monthly bill.
Fair enough.
Okay, so it just goes right back in.
Mr. Reeves, do we have any vacant buildings in the city of Bristol, Virginia that we could refab and so forth to make this? And when I say make this, I mean 10 dogs, I mean, you're talking about the minimum, but we really, you know, my personal opinion, we need to reach out more to the, to the animals. If we, you know, if we need to take more and so forth, take more, or take 10 to 15 and let them stay there longer so they're not euthanized. Because, you know, if we get the message out that we have a facility where animals can be adopted, and we maintain a website and so forth and so on and show people, then my suspicions are that it'll be like Sullivan County, the Kingsport Shelter, the Johnson City, Washington County Animal Shelter in Tennessee, which does an exceptional job of advertising Pet Finders and so forth and so on. I mean, what I'm saying is, and is there any grant potential that we can get and so forth to reach out to and say, hey, we want to do this, because this, in my opinion, is about as worthy a cause as we can have.
I'll answer your first question in regards to potential buildings. There is a potential for a building at the landfill where that could happen. However, I do believe we would need to get involved with the state in order to see if that would be an appropriate facility. And there are pros and cons to that facility. One, it's not in a very, very high-track, picketed area, which, you know, it goes both ways. If we want the public to be aware of the facility and let them, you know, know that there is an animal shelter where we're adopting animals, that may not be necessarily the best location. But if you advertise it correctly, you know, there's, you know, there's pros and cons to that facility, like no matter where we put it. Another potential that was mentioned was potentially building something at Sugar Hollow Park, where there's already a dog park. You've got people there with animals who are out walking. They will, it'll be in a more visible area where people would be more likely to potentially enter into the shelters. They may be thinking of adopting a cat or a dog, and if it's there in front of them, it may be something that they would just walk into one day and, you know, find- it may be something that they would just walk into one day and, you know, find the love of their life and take it home with them. In regards to grants, there are potential grants out there. One potential grant is from the United States Department of Agriculture. The city meets those criteria. We would have to apply for that grant. I'm not exactly sure how much they would give based on the information I found. There wasn't an amount that they would give. But they, it appears that they would help substantially in regards to the building of a animal shelter. There are other grants out there that help with studies to determine the type of facility you need, the size you need and things of that nature. However, based on our timeline, I'm not sure if we have enough time to truly study the issue and apply for the grants and put out an RFP for a company to come in and do an analysis of the city and then give us an idea of what we need. Something I'll be more than willing to do if council directs me in that direction, but we are under a time crunch at this point.
Well, I think Dr. Allen apparently is a very, very compassionate veterinarian. And if he understands that we're actually trying to make this facility something that would enable us to keep these animals around like he tries to keep them around, then I think, in other words, we're making progress and I know you have your hands full. I mean, I understand that, but if you can get someone to study these grants, if you can tell me how to do it, I'll do it just because I love animals. I want this done for the less fortunate that we have out here. And, and the animals out here suffering and so forth needlessly in cold and heat and so forth and so on without a home, that bothers me. And this is a worthy cause and, you know, maybe you can reach out at your, in your convenience to Dr. Allen, explain we're trying and let's.
I think he wants to see movement and I think, you know, council's, at least on preliminary discussions I've had, are ready to make some movement. We've just got to make sure we make the right choice.
So you're saying that the deal with Washington County is not feasible at this point?
I'm not saying that it's not feasible. The question is going to be their timeline. I mean, as of, as the timeline that we're put on, it's not feasible. Now, we can have further discussions with Washington County. I think they're open for that. However, that may mean we may need to find some other place rather than Dr. Allen's facility during that time period. It may require us potentially housing their animals at Washington County for a period of time in order to facilitate getting a facility built the, the size that would be needed and, you know, for the cost. I mean, Washington County, based on their cost analysis, and I sent you copies of it, their estimates were close to a million dollars and over a million dollars for the size of the building that they would need. They're really going to be on the hook for this animal shelter a lot more than the city of Bristol would be. So they're not as excited to spend the million dollars as we'd like for them to be at this time.
You know, you were talking about the fact that location, people go all the way up to Washington County, Virginia off of, what is that, that highway?
Yeah, I mean, you're off Highway.
Terrible place and you go up this bad country road, but they'll go up there to get an animal.
Right.
If location was really a criteria for that, we'd be any business at Crocker Bear, you can't get to their place.
That's right.
That's the secret back road to it.
It's, you know, I would agree with that because we have that, you know, regular meetings with the county, the city manager and the county administrator and the mayor and the supervisor and talked about that, the possibility, but it is more of a longer term solution. And, but I do think what they were looking at was something from Abingdon South that would be more convenient to both Bristol and the bulk of Washington County's population there.
I can tell you, based on the discussions I've had, having a joint animal shelter at the landfill would be a no-go for Washington County. They would be willing potentially to come to Sugar Hollow Park. They have some land near the airport at exit thirteen. That they could potentially build on that we, it would require us to drive a little bit further. But I think if, if we were looking to do something joint with Washington County, we would need to start, one, we need to start moving forward with that quickly and determining what we're going to do with our animals after November first. And then two, decide on a place which the county's willing to, I think, to go anywhere between exits ten and thirteen, or I'll say Sugar Hollow Park and thirteen.
Well, we got a problem then because you're talking about November first and what you're talking about is they may, we might, this, this, this. So it sounds to me like we don't right now and we're not going to make November first. We've got a problem.
We're not going to make November, we're not going to make November first if we're going into a joint venture with Washington County.
If we're not going to go into a joint venture with Washington County, how long do we need and what do we need, Mr. Reeves? How long, what's the best case scenario you can think of?
Best case scenario that we can think of, we build a slab, put up a post still building, put up the interiors. You could probably have that done close to November first if not before.
That's a patch job. What to do the middle ground?
Middle ground is going beyond November first?
Yeah, I'm talking about to really do it right. I mean, what you just said is a patch job.
Right, that's a patch job.
And that's going to cost money to be something we're not going to use.
And you're, and you're not going to do it right?
That's right.
And, you know, so you might as well not do it. So if you're going to do it, do it right. What we need to do, we'll have to get an architect involved in order to design the facility in accordance with the state codes and regulations. With that being said, a lot of the stuff we can do, we can do in-house, so we wouldn't necessarily have to go out and hire a contractor to build this. We would need contractors for certain things, but, you know, for the most part, we could do the majority of the work in-house. You know, I think you could potentially have something done.
April first, two thousand eighteen?
At the very latest. I would like to think we'd be able to have something and I'd like to think it'll be a fifty dollar fine.
I'll write you a check.
We'd like to have something.
From BBU, okay.
I mean, I'd like to have something in place by the end of January would be ideal, I think.
I mean, realistically, I think if we can do that, it gives you an opportunity to get someone perhaps on staff and so forth to pursue the grants and so forth. Somebody to volunteer perhaps to pursue the grants. We really need to do some, we don't need to rely on Washington County. We may have to one day. We may be a part of Washington County one day. But realistically, you know, we can do this cheaper and we can take care of our animals. And we just need, we need to make it a priority and you may think it's not a priority.
Well, no, it's a priority. We've got till November first and other than that, we're going to be in trouble and.
God's watching. I'm going to tell you something. God's watching this because these are our lesser creatures.
And the other thing that, you know, I need some direction on from council at some point, do we want to open this up to members of the public so that they can drop off their animals and we charge them a fee in order to take care of their animals and things of that nature? So I mean, there's several, if we're doing strictly an animal shelter, that's one thing. If we're going to open it up, like I, I think Mr. Wingard maybe had mentioned that, open it up to the public. You know, we'll have to have a, not necessarily a separate facility, but the animals that are staying that are properly owned by individuals, they would need to be separated from the animal shelter animals. So, you know, it's going to require a bigger facility.
Those up there together. Sorry, ma'am, we just killed your dog.
Yeah, that, that's the problem. You're going to get into some liability. You start missing somebody's dog, man.
But if you keep them separated, you're not going to have that issue.
But who's going to be the employees? Are they going to be public employees paid for by Bristol taxpayers or are they going to be private employees paid for here?
No, I mean, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be employees of the city of Bristol.
You can't do that.
And so, you know, that's a potential for revenue stream if you want to go that route. But your dogs are not going to be in open areas. If they're ever in an open area, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they should be on a leash. That way you don't have any interaction with a potentially dangerous animal that would, you know, kill Mr. Jones's cat. So I mean, there's things, you know, there's things in place in order to keep the animal sheltered dogs and cats separated from your non-animal sheltered animals.
I think you, if you're talking about quasi-public-private, then you're going to have.
There's no private. It's all public.
Well, now, what you're saying is if you're going to let the public house animals from the public and earn revenue, then yeah, you're actually talking a private governmental stream of revenue paid for by the taxpayers, the people that work there and so forth are going to be paid for by the taxpayers with private monies going in. And I don't know how in the world you, you do that.
Then how do you do it with the Sugar Hollow Park when you put up a parking meter and charge people to go in and park?
Well, it's a little bit, it's a different scenario. I mean, they're going in there to use the facilities as opposed to paying to take care of an animal. I think you have, I think there's a big difference, Mr. Reeves, there. You're providing a service for a animal as opposed to you're driving your vehicle into a pri, a public park facility. So I think there is a diff, I think there's a difference.
And there very well may be a difference and we can look in to see if other localities do that sort of thing. This was an idea that was brought up by one council member and.
I think it's good. I think it's good.
We need to explore all options because if we can generate some revenue off of it to help offset the cost, that's good for us. If for whatever reason we can't do what Mr. Wingard has suggested, then we can't do it and it's just, you know.
We can do it. We can contract with whomever wants to bid for that property and we can do it that way. And that way it becomes separate and distinct. They pay us X dollars, we RFP it and so forth and so on.
Sign a long-term lease.
That's right.
Build it and run it.
Which is very possible too, but there's, there's two or three ways rather than I think the city getting involved with a private government. I mean, that, that goes back to some of the things we're in debt right now from and I, I mean, geez.
Ms. Bowden, do you have any ideas on short-term solutions? Like I haven't heard mentioned, other veterinary facilities in the region that might be a option?
I don't think that there's any veterinarian that's willing to take this on. Everyone, Dr. Dobson is a one-person clinic with his receptionist. He doesn't have the space or availability. Dr. Reel doesn't have the space. Dr. Ferguson is full up. No one wants an animal shelter in their veterinary hospital to, you know. I'm one of two in the state of Virginia that have an animal shelter in a veterinary hospital. No one wants it. They want separate and, you know, they don't want their clients to have to see animal control, which, you know, sometimes comes in in a bad light and they don't want to know that the animal shelter is working with the veterinarian. They, they don't get a warm and fuzzy feeling from that.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you need a building, we'll figure out a way to pay the vet. If you just need a building until you can figure it out, I'll donate a building. No, seriously. I mean, now, you've got to figure out how to get the cages, but bottom line is, I mean, I'll donate a building to the city for our animals. Okay, period, until we get this done. But I'm expecting that something's going to be moved in the next six months on this project. Otherwise, I'm going to be disappointed. But we're not going to let, we're, you know, we're not going, I'm not going to see this go by the wayside.
Well, it's not going to go by the wayside. I mean, you know.
I don't, I don't.
We don't have an option. We got to do something.
Yeah, we got to do, we got to do something. I don't think you got time to build anything by November first, but you've got to decide a direction pretty quickly here, right? So we need to, I think we need to quickly decide if there's a building available or if one be donated and get some engineering.
I'll donate it.
And get some engineering done to see what the cost of modification of that building, you know, to meet the code.
We've been here a year and we've talked more than anybody. We're talkers.
I would say we go out on RFP and get some engineering services done and locate the, the buildings available and have them, have the engineering services firm go look at the buildings, see what modification costs are, landfill building, donated buildings and go from there. I don't like the idea of the, in the park. I think that's, I think that's a public place for people to walk around. A lot of people don't want.
I agree.
You know, the, the animals up there, that's, I don't think that's a good idea. But I think we quickly need to go out on RFP and get some.
Good idea.
Now, if I was going to say, let's go on RFP on a short-term, you know, veterinary services to see if, you know, to make sure we're not missing anybody that might want to do something short-term. So go on RFP short-term to house them and then go on RFP for design services to modify, to build and or modify a building to house animals.
Okay, well, now we got two problems. If Mr. Fleener donates a building and we have an engineer come in, we're going to have an expense for the engineer to come in and modify that building. Don't know if your donation is long-term or short-term.
No, no, no. Let's make sure we're on the same page. Look, dude, I'm not putting places in there and like they have at, at Sullivan County. I'm, I'm saying if we need a temporary fix, we have a building, we're going to need cages, temporary cages. Okay, big cages, little cages. I'm not talking about making any modifications to it. I'm just saying if I can make it easy on the city to move forward with something, I will do that on a short-term basis without any rent-free, no, you know, just for the animal's sake, okay? And it's a perfect building for it. I mean, you know, I wanted to tear it down. Not my dad, he wouldn't tear anything down. If you can get a hundred bucks out of it, he's going to rent it. I mean, you know, but this is better and he would love to do this and I'm, I'm sure and, but you understand what I'm saying? You know those metal cages, Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I understand.
And that might be a temporary fix and we're close to a veterinarian down the road and so forth up the road who might be able to short-term help us with taking care of the animals on a short-term basis.
Okay, I completely understand that. Now, we've got that issue potentially solved. The next issue is how do we want to move forward long-term?
I'm going to, just, we talked about working with Washington County. What does Bristol, Tennessee do? And would it be even possible to work with Bristol, Tennessee because of the difference in state laws? I mean, are they part of the Kingsport Sullivan County Shelter?
They, they've just signed on with SBK.
Okay.
So what they've, what they've done before they just.
Didn't think they were.
Yeah, before they just signed on and actually have put money into this new facility that SBK is building, what they did is their officers will pick up animals loose in their city. They have a holding facility on Vance, Vance Drive.
That's right.
So they would take all of the animals there, hold them there for their state mandated hold. And then as Sullivan County had space available, they would transfer animals to Sullivan County and Sullivan County would handle all of the adoptions. Now, the problem that they were running into, they were meeting their state mandated hold time, Sullivan County didn't have space for them.
That's right.
You know, so they ended up holding an animal maybe five days here. It's now available for adoption, but it's got two more weeks up in Bristol because there's no space. Whether or not that changes with the new SBK that's going in, in Kingsport by Lowe's, I don't know. I believe that Bristol, Tennessee will still be doing the same.
I think so.
Actually, no, I can't remember. Don't hold me to that. I'm not sure if they're going to be holding at their Vance Drive facility anymore or not. If they're just going to be going straight to the new facility. I think that they're probably going to be holding on Vance.
I think so.
I would need to check on that.
I mean, I was just thinking also for that short-term issue as well, maybe that might be a potential solution while you're, you're building a facility.
And we're in Tennessee now.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, we're currently in Tennessee now. So, you know, the convenience for our citizens would be a little bit off and, you know, I talked to the state vet tech who inspects us and, you know, she's not a fan of us going across state lines, but there's nothing to say that we can't contract with a facility in Tennessee. So you come to think of it, really, your short-term might be, let me go to Vance Drive as many animals as I pick up. One thing to consider also is November first in the winter months, I'm a whole lot less busier. I'm not going to bring in the amount of animals that you see me bringing in in the summertime. So, you know, whether that's with Bristol, Tennessee, your facility or Washington County, I'm not bringing in the level of animals that I would bring in in June and July.
I just don't want to see them euthanized. Whatever we can do to make sure that these animals aren't euthanized.
Well, I mean, you have your state mandated hold time. I mean, I've got to hold them per the state for so many days. After that period, it's on the table. Euthanasia is an option. So.
I may be able to move my wife out and we have to and, and use, use my condo projects, I mean, my condos. So, you know, whatever we got to do to.
We do the best we can.
Please, yes, I do. I have cages. Yes.
How much are we paying right now to house these animals?
About eighteen thousand a year.
About eighteen to twenty thousand a year, yes.
That's all they have.
It's, it's, yeah.
I, I think we need to talk to Tennessee and see if we can do short-term with them and buy us some time.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think if we had some time, we could look at, you know, like you were saying, the landfill. And I'm just kind of thinking, but, you know, as you go up the road there up Shakesville, down there where those dumpsters are, it might be more accessible. You know, I guess knowing how much land we need if we're going to build a building would be, because we, you had asked for that, the amounts of land the city has, maybe we could find a spot somewhere.
Even before you get inside the landfill, we own a lot on Shakesville Road there. We have a fenced-in area with recycled dumpsters there. We can maybe relocate those dumpsters and use that spot of land to build something which is more accessible to the public.
And that would give you more time. I assume USDA, you was talking about a community facilities grant is probably, I assume, be what you could qualify for. But again, it'd give you more time to explore that and some other options if we could buy a little bit of time there.
We could get a good short-term solution, then we can advertise, does anybody want to build their own shelter? Will we set, give you a long-term lease?
I'd love that. I'd love that.
I think the big people step up to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to rush into something. We need to look at short-term options that'll buy us some time so we can really get our head wrapped around this, which direction we want to go.
Well, and that's why I put it on for discussion tonight because we need to start doing that. So what I'm hearing from council, I just want to reiterate to make sure I'm on the same page with you all, look at short-term solutions right now. At the same time, start looking for long-term solutions as well, but prioritize the short-term solution and potentially start moving into a long-term solution later in the fall or early next year.
How about RFP, though, guys? I mean, what do y'all think about an RFP now for either public and/or private solutions of this?
I think you go RFP, I don't think there's anything that prevents you-
Well, I mean, I think we have to, I mean, the que- the question I, we've got to determine, do we want someone to build it, do we want to build it? I mean, you know, I'm getting all sorts of different ideas, and I need some sort of direction to go. I mean, because if you are, I can RFP for, uh, some, I can RFP for something long-term, but how do we want to do that? Do we want someone to build it, and then we, I mean, right now, there's no facility. I mean, you know, so, we've got to get a facility somewhere, and is that going to be, someone build it and lease it for them?
I think we need to ask somebody, are they interested in doing this, and we guarantee the lease.
I don't think that's a bad idea, Mr. Hubbard, I, I think that's a good idea.
It might be some money that we can give this person as an incentive to build one.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, first, you want to find out if anybody in the private sector would like to build one and have a nice-
So, how are you going to do that unless you RFP it, put some-
Put it out there, put it out there as for private?
Yeah, I think you go out with a proposal that says, we're, we're looking for proposals to build a facility of X size with a long-term lease agreement for twenty-five years or something, and then see what, and then see what interest you get.
Amen.
That'd be a guaranteed income for somebody.
I would say-
A good income.
Try that, and then the next step would probably be to design services, because regardless, if you build it yourself, you're still going to need somebody to design it.
If we build it, you do it.
Yeah, but, but if you, but I mean, do what you suggested, and I think that's the first step, and then the next one would be the, figure out what, because when you get into the design, then you really get into knowing the numbers of what it's going to cost, although, as you point out, some of those, the labor and some other things, you might be able to-
But they're not real elaborate, of course, I mean, I'm sure a cinder block costs a fortune nowadays. I don't have a price of a cinder block in forever, but I would assume that it's brick and mortar, pretty, it's basic, it's not something that's an elaborate thing.
It doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal, I mean, it can be a basic type facility, but you can still make it look nice, um-
I'd like for it to smell nice, I mean, that's the biggest thing, is, you know, realistically, you go in some of these shelters, my God, I mean, you know, you pray for a cold or something, I mean, you know, respiratory illness.
I was going to say, if you put it outside-
Okay, you have a discussion on the animal shelter?
Just in between these RFPs, we need to reach out to Tennessee.
So, here's what I'm, here's what I'm doing, we're reaching out to Tennessee, we'll start that discussion tomorrow. Uh, we will do an RFP for someone to build a facility that would allow us to lease it, uh, see if we have any interest in that. If we do not have any interest in that, then we will start RFPing for design services in order to determine the, um, uh, how much it was, give us an idea of what it's going to cost. The only hiccup to this is, if no one in Tennessee wants to accept our animals, we may have to be back to the drawing board relatively quickly.
Last ditch is, I, I, what I'll do, you know, you, you can do that, okay? Free, period, and thank you, ma'am, for everything you do and the compassion you show to animals. I know you do, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Can we put this back on the agenda for the next meeting so we can get updates and see we're wrapped? Because we've got a ninety-day timeline.
The Au- the August eighth meeting will be a joint meeting in Washington County, so what I can do is update you all individually between now and then, and, uh, but we can put it on the August twenty-second agenda.
Can we do a consensus if we all agree to do an, let you do an RFP, or do we have to vote on that at the next meeting?
I can do an RFP now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was the-
It has approved expense.
Please start that, Ben, I think, and maybe prepare the wording on it and let us all look at it, maybe we can all kind of tweak it a little bit and get the right thing out.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to put twenty-five here.
I mean, I agree, so, yeah.
Make it short-term, let's move on from serious.
Right.
Absolutely.
Well, and I was going to say, actually, if somebody leases it, that might accomplish what, um-
Mr. Wingard.
Mr. Wingard, they could do, you know, if they're going to build it, they could build one side to house the city stuff on one side.
Yeah, they could do anything they want to.
They could do, yeah, yeah, and it might give them a stream of revenue as well as the lease income, so, might make it work well.
All right, um, next item, executive session. Uh, need a motion from council to, uh, go into executive session pursuant to two-point-two-thirty-seven-eleven dot eight-seven, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, potential litigation.
I move to go into executive session pursuant to what you just said, Mr. Mayor.
Say go Mr. Hubbard, Clerk Colerole.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, getting started here by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk Colerole.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right. All right, down to council, discussion items, again, item D, matters to be presented by members of the public. I'll get a sheet of anybody that's signed up for anything, is there anyone that wants to speak on any particular item? Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen of the city council, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at one-on-one Ashley Drive. Let me start by making a comment from the last meeting. Um, I am very much looking forward to the new communications options. A few weeks ago, several people said that they had heard the fireworks were canceled. But that was, that was a great show, and obviously other people knew about it, because there was a great crowd. Concerning one of the topics that came up tonight, and one thing that comes up fairly regularly, we need to get into a can-do mindset. Uh, whenever I, I ask for volunteers, most people tell me, ain't nobody got time for that. We used to chip in and help. Nancy Marney can tell myriad stories of people working together to make Bristol a better place. Through local churches, United Way, and other organizations, people are still helping each other. We need a new member for the Planet Commission, uh, the mayor's mentioned a number of upcoming needs in recent meetings. We could use volunteer firefighters, a day in the park is coming up in a few weeks, and people other than schoolteachers and public officials should be concerned, and that seems to be most of who are volunteering for that, and we have other needs, possibly including an upcoming animal shelter. We need to stop criticizing everyone who does get involved, and we need to step up and volunteer. Everyone is busy, but if every productive, upstanding citizen will contribute even one hour a month, we would soon see Bristol rapidly become a much better and friendlier and cooperative place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard.
Thank you.
All right, no other sign-ups, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Ms. Marney, we have this new form, it's called a sign-up sheet, it's back on the back table, and you put your name, address, and whether it's a non-agenda or agenda item, but that's okay, you can do it next time.
This is called a foot.
Can, can you tell us which size that is, Ms. Marney? Can you tell us which size that foot is?
Make sure you turn this light on.
What, what size?
Is your foot?
It doesn't matter, it's very efficient, it works well. Gentlemen, my name is Nancy Marney. I am a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner. I would urge this council, uh, you are full of vim and vigor and dreams, hopes, but I would urge you, as you move forward, to understand and be very clear in your mind as to what Bristol, Virginia has of value, and why is it of value? I have reasons for bringing this up tonight, I didn't intend to do this, but I have reasons for bringing this up tonight. My suggestion to you is, be very, very careful, be very diligent, be very thorough in what you are willing to give up in order to get something else. Now, this means that you have to have a thorough knowledge and understanding of what is desirable in this community, what is valuable in this community, what contributes in what way to this community, and what is the next step beyond the obvious? And that often is the point at which people stop, they don't make that next step. Well, we can do this, we can do that, we can do the other, and then they stop, but there is more to it. What have you prevented from happening because you did this? What are you making more difficult to happen because you did that? What have you destroyed that was good or valuable or contributing or drew good because you did that instead of something else? I would suggest and urge you be very, very careful what you give up in order to get something else or to do something else. I have some very legitimate questions about some things that are happening and on the board. I won't get into that now, but I do have concerns, and I have concerns because you're making decisions that affect me. I'm a citizen, I'm a resident, a property owner. You are making decisions that affect my life. You are spending money that may be my money, and I have a vested interest, and I happen to love this community. I've been all over the place, but I've ended up right back where I started. All over the United States, forty-eight states, yeah, out of the country, all over the place, but I've ended up right back here. I don't have to stay, but I ended up here for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, let me say this, though, Ms. Marney, with all respect, um, I'm not asking you to step back to the podium, Ms. Marney, I'm just going to say this, when you talk in riddles, it reminds me of watching the Batman series when I was growing up in the sixties and seventies, and the Riddler always said, riddle me this, Batman. And what you just basically did was you reminded me of what I used to watch in Thirty Minutes, and, you know, thirty-minute shows on TV. Adam, I think Ward was Batman back then, I think he passed away recently, but, um, so when you say this, uh, riddle me, I'm saying to you, you speak in riddles. We can't read minds. You know, I don't want to come back here sixty days, six months from here, and you say, remember I said this on July, whenever it was, meeting? Well, no, I don't remember what you said, just, we're, we're spending your money, and you don't have to stay here, and we're doing things that affect your lives, and so forth and so on. Well, you know, I don't know what we've done that's designated so much money that's affected your life particularly, or anyone else's. What this council's tried to do, and I want to say this matter-of-factly, this council has tried to fix messes that other councils have placed Bristol in the mess of. So, you know, I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to tell anyone else that wants to get up here and riddle me this, Batman. Bottom line is, um, I don't know what we've done as a council that's put anyone in any bad position. But, um, if you have specifics, then say them. If you don't, don't come up here and talk about this, this, and this. I mean, you know, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know if anybody up here does, but it confounds me, and I don't appreciate it, I'll just say, it confounds me. Thank you.
May I reply, Mr. Mayor, since this is as a result of my remarks?
I think you've had your time to comment.
I'm sorry?
I think you've had your time to comment, he said no comment, I respect what he just said.
But you don't respect what I said?
Well, no, you had your time to speak, and he said he didn't, he didn't necessarily-
But you're not going to let me reply?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Mr. Flainer, I thought you were an intelligent man, but you are-
She's out of order.
All right, city manager, comments?
Uh, council? As I previously said, I want to take this time to, uh, highlight the positive things that are going on in the city, uh, for the, uh, the community to know what's going on. Uh, previously, I mentioned that we will be having meetings throughout the community. I have divided that up into six segments, and I'm currently working on, uh, securing locations for each of those meetings to make sure that we can meet at the appropriate time and that we'll have a place for everyone to go to. And I'm, no, I'd mentioned I wanted to have my first one on July twenty-fourth. I think I was being a little too optimistic, um, in order to get that pulled together that quickly, but I'm looking, uh, to potentially have the first meeting on August twenty-second now with members of the community. Uh, secondly, I want to echo what the mayor had mentioned earlier today. Uh, I know we've spent some time out at the landfill a couple of Fridays ago. Um, I don't know if the citizens of the city know the type of hard work that the employees do at that landfill, it's a, uh, probably a thankless job, and, um, we should be grateful for those individuals who, uh, work at that facility, taking care of the, uh, refuse that's produced throughout the city, and, um, it's a tremendous asset to us, and their, uh, hard work and dedication, um, really does pay off. They do a lot with a little, and it's something, when you see them out picking up your trash, I would encourage every citizen to tell them thank you, because they do do a tremendous job for the city. Secondly, I've been sitting in this interim position for, uh, twenty-two days now, and I want to compliment everyone in the city of Bristol, they have been, um, tremendous working with me, helping me through this process, and, um, th- this council needs to know how lucky they are for some of the employees that this city has, or all the employees that this city has, um, based on the interactions I've had with them so far, and I continue to look forward to working with them on a daily basis. So, with that, I'll be quiet.
Let me say one thing, um, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if other members of council know this, I know this because of your father, that you're going, next week is a, is this month is a grieving period for you, Mr. Reeves, and I know that, uh, loss of your brother. And, um, my prayers, and I think this council's prayers will be with you as you, I know you're taking some time, and, uh, I want you to know you're, you'll be in my thoughts, and I'm sure you'll be in this council's thoughts, sir.
I'll appreciate that, and, uh, it'll be nine years ago tomorrow, and, um, so-
Hug your daddy for me, will you?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
And with that, we, uh, remember, we lost a Virginia high graduate, um, with a car accident last week, um, which is very sad for the family, so keep that family in your prayers as well. With that, uh, city council meeting to, July twenty-fifth is adjourned.